Good evening, everyone. I am calling the meeting of the St. Louis County Council to order Tuesday, February 16th, 2021 at 6:30 PM. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Days?
Here.
Councilmember Dunaway? Councilmember Fitch?
Here.
Councilmember Webb? Councilmember Clancy?
Here.
Councilmember Tracus?
Present.
Councilmember Harder?
Present.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Clancy?
Yes, thank you, Councilwoman Days. As you know, we are in a continued dispute over who is legally the chair of the county council. I've spoken with you several times to let you know that if it is your will to preside over the meetings for the time being, so be it. I want to make sure that we continue with our council business to the best extent possible. However, I do need to continue to state my objections into the record.
Thank you. Councilwoman Tracus?
Yes, thank you. I just concur and join in Councilwoman Clancy's objection for all the reasons I stated last week. I think the preferred and prudent course until the court rules on the pending litigation is to alternate who presides over our meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the Journal of February 2nd, 2021?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, no. Motion carries. The Journal for February 2nd, 2021 is approved. The February 9th, 2021 Journal has not been finalized yet, so we will move to bid openings. We have no bid openings this evening, so we will move to communications.
Madam Chair, we have no tax compromises or zoning matters this evening, so we will move to road and bridge matters. Under Road and Bridge Matters, item number one, Third District.
Receive file and the streets be accepted for maintenance as requested.
Is there a second?
Second.
Make sure you call your name so that the clerk can understand who's making the second.
Second, Harder.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Item number two, Sixth District.
Receive file and the street be accepted for maintenance as requested.
Is there a second?
Second. Dunaway.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Item number three, all districts.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Moving on to other communications. Item number one.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number two.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number three.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number four.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number five, Second District.
Receive, file, and hold on the order of business. Same motion through item number eight.
So ordered.
Item number nine, Third District.
Receive file and the replacement deposit agreement be approved as recommended.
Is there a second?
Second. Harder.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Item number 10, Sixth District.
Receive file and the replacement deposit agreement be approved as recommended, please.
Is there a second?
Second. Dunaway.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Item number 11, Sixth District.
Receive and file, same motion for through item number 13.
So ordered.
Item number 14, First District.
Receive, file, and refer to the St. Louis County Board of Police Commissioners, and that will be the order.
Item number 15, Second District.
Receive, file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 16, Fifth District.
Receive, file, and refer to the St. Louis County Board of Police Commissioners.
So ordered, and the meeting request will be referred to the Justice, Health, and Welfare Committee.
This is being referred to a committee?
Correct.
Item number 17, Fifth District.
Receive, file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion for item number 18.
And that was so ordered.
Item number 19, Seventh District.
Receive, file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 20.
Receive, file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 21.
Receive, file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 22.
Receive, file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 23, Second District.
Receive, file, contract in an amount not to exceed $2,34,248.97 be approved and awarded to NB West Contracting Company, the lowest responsive bidder, as recommended, and authorization for revision to the traffic control devices be approved as requested.
Is there a second?
Second. Tracus?
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Item number 24, Third and Fifth Districts.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 25, Fourth District.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 26, Sixth District.
Receive, file, and county council will be requested to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered. Reporter, the county executive.
Good evening, everyone. This morning, I stood with labor leaders and signed the prevailing wage enforcement ordinance that was unanimously passed by this council. Labor is the backbone of our workforce, essential in ensuring a fair wage and a stable working class. Prevailing wage plays a critical role in making certain construction projects across the region are built by a well-qualified workforce. My administration took early action in my tenure as county executive to guarantee those who help build our economy are not short-changed for the hard work that they do. In September of 2019, a few months after I took office, I requested legislation to require that with any economic development project assisted by tax incentives, the developer must not pay less than prevailing wage to contractors and subcontractors on that project. The council approved that bill, and I followed that legislative action by signing an executive order establishing the position of prevailing wage enforcement coordinator. I then requested legislation, which was unanimously passed by this council, known as the prevailing wage enforcement ordinance. This formally codifies St. Louis County's prevailing wage program, including the prevailing wage enforcement coordinator. The heart of prevailing wage laws is the conviction the government ought to use its buying power to enhance the welfare of workers and their families. Prevailing wage laws ensure a stable, well-qualified workforce that produces a high-quality work product. Prevailing wage laws have increased the number of bids for state contracts across the country and may signal to good actors that they too can compete and win government contracts. Bids often come at the expense of low wages for those hired to do the work, and that can lead to a less qualified workforce and an inferior project. The ordinance gives St. Louis County the necessary tools to investigate potential violations by requiring contractors to provide certified payroll, allow access to job sites, and to post notices to keep workers informed of their rights. An echoing words of labor leaders who joined me this morning, laws such as these provide a more diverse, productive workforce and safer work sites. Prevailing wage laws benefit blue-collar workers in our communities by encouraging training, lowering the rate of injuries, promoting healthcare coverage, minimizing disruption to local labor markets, and ensuring that minority and female workers receive prevailing wages. They also provide opportunities for wider participation in apprenticeship programs. This bipartisan legislation shows the broad support for a well-qualified workforce and makes it a priority to expand training and work opportunities in our communities. That's all for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Public forum. Diane, how many speakers do we have this evening?
Madam Chair, we have nine speakers this evening.
All right. Thank you very much. When your name is called, please listen to the clerk, and I ask that you, before you ask, be asked to begin speaking, sorry, and then state your first and last name along with your zip code for the record. The clerk will inform you when your three minutes are up. So, Madam Clerk, will you begin with our first speaker?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening, our first speaker will be Elizabeth Cohen, followed by Stacy Camerer.
My name is Elizabeth Cohen. Zip code is 63005. Yesterday, there were 37 new COVID cases in St. Louis County, according to the St. Louis County website. The last time we saw numbers that low was on June 17th, when we also had 37 new cases. This is down from our high of 1,148 new cases on November 12th. That is a 96.7% drop in cases. Why are we still locked down? Why are we still wearing masks to work out? Why are kids wearing masks to play sports? Why are restaurants at 50% capacity? Why is there a curfew? Why are we still quarantining kids who are wearing masks at school despite no evidence that there is major spread at school? Sam Page, why are you not following CDC guidelines? Why are you not following the sideline, the science? On December 14th, in a press briefing, Sam Page stated that there needed to be a downward trend in order to loosen restrictions. This is not just a downward trend. The numbers are plummeting. The harm from these mandates and restrictions now far outweigh any benefit. Stop playing politics with our lives. You work for us. Start acting like it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Stacy Camerer, followed by Lynn Labob.
Hi, Stacy Camerer, 63043. I am actually writing in tonight after watching the appalling behavior of councilperson Tracus and Clancy today in the committee of the whole. I just felt compelled to write in. First of all, I want to start off by doing a little St. Louis County geography lesson. It's necessary since clearly councilperson Clancy and possibly councilperson Tracus don't leave South County. I can't believe I heard you arguing and you didn't even know the location of the powerplex that you're arguing about. Just for your information, the powerplex is located in Old St. Louis Mills Mall at 5555 St. Louis Mills Road in Hazelwood, Missouri. That's surrounded by the Hazelwood School District, one of the last districts that's going to be going even hybrid in schooling. The building there is easily transformed in the current capacity that it is because it's been kept up, heating, air conditioning, lights on, and it's just an ideal spot and very centrally located for St. Louis County. Meanwhile, I couldn't believe that I heard you mentioning Jamestown Mall, which is 29 miles north in far North County with not a lot of hotels and restaurants and things like that around it, and I'm sure you've never been there. But by the way, it closed in 2014. If you Google Jamestown Mall, you can see that it's in quite a bit of disrepair, and there's trees growing throughout it and water leaking and all kinds of things. So I think before maybe you argue about something like that, you should get a little bit more informed about it. It just became clear that you have no clue about a large part of the county that you claim to serve. It's about power. That's what it is. And maybe councilperson Dunaway should have been present since it's her area, and maybe her absentee today was pre-arranged, possibly. So now it's time for a math lesson. Since my son's St. Louis County soccer tournament was canceled, now we have to go to the competitor, which Dan Buck mentioned today, which is in Grand Park, Indianapolis. So to do a little bit of math for my family of four, two nights in a hotel is $270. Three meals a day for four people for three days, that's about $720. Recreation and snacks, that's about 200. So for our family of four to go for the weekend and spend money in their location, that's about $1,190 for those of us counting. And with the families of 16 soccer players, if they're comparable, that's almost $19,000 for one team. All spending money in outside areas and not in St. Louis County. This is money that St. Louis County has been missing out on for.
Madam Chair, that is three minutes. Our next speaker is Lynn Labob, followed by Suzanne Burley.
Hi there. Good evening, council members. My name is Lynn Labob, and my zip code is 63123. My comments tonight concern two petitions that were on the agenda a few weeks ago. One is a petition for a car wash and one for an oil change business both in unincorporated southwest St. Louis County. As a resident of incorporate, unincorporated St. Louis County, it seems that thoughtful planning for our community may at times is not, is not present. For instance, this past year, the proposed car wash location was rezoned for a restaurant with a drive-through. The community supported those efforts despite losing a current popular restaurant called Breakfast and Burger at that site. Now we find out that there's a proposal for a car wash despite the fact that there are numerous car washes in the Afton area. We have precious little space for development in our old community that spurs on revivalitization. I can't talk tonight. Sorry. The restaurant with the drive-through can, can serve the residents of Afton by having food option for those on the run like me with a full-time job. It can serve families looking for a place to grab a meal with their children and go about their daily lives. It can serve as, serve as a place for students to gather after school. That particular area, of course, Gravois serves the Lutheran High School and Corrie Zoo communities. You can go on, on that stretch of Gravois and any day after school and see the students out and about. Additionally, nearby is a closed-down Taco Bell. This Taco Bell at Lindbergh and Tasen Ferry has served its communities for decades. The building sits on a nice piece of land and perfect for a new drive-through restaurant, as opposed to another oil change that the area is already saturated with. In fact, a nearby Valvoline has now just closed its door recently in the area, real close. The proposed, the proposed oil change is from a company out of Florida, not a local business, of course. Again, we feel very overlooked and unincorporated St. Louis County as it relates to thoughtful planning. When the council votes on these proposals, we, we ask that you would leave the zoning as it is for a restaurant with a drive-through in both of those locations. And I thank you very much, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Suzanne Burley, followed by Josh Schur.
Great. Okay, first of all, thank you to those that are calling in about the Afton situation with the car wash. I'm in Afton. We don't want a car wash. So I didn't prepare too much tonight, but what I wanted to talk about is something that's kind of near and dear to me. I've been in IT for a number of years, and Chris, this is in no way anything personal with you because I know you're doing the best that you can, given the situation that you're in. But what I want to say is to go every week without acknowledging the ongoing technical issues that the public comments are bringing, it, it's really unfair to each and every one of us that are calling in. And I can guarantee you that it's not only the callers having the issues. I'm not sure that the technology that you're using is able to support the environment in which you're attempting to create. I've called in to, on three occasions, I've brought up an extension of registration time. I've never heard anything about it. I know on another call, there was another caller that suggested an increase in the time as well. Now, I myself have supported large meetings and executives for a number of years, and I know it takes longer than 28 minutes to work out issues. We've been doing this for, for many weeks, and still, no one even realizes that, like for the callers, we have to wait for Chris to unmute us before we can speak. So oftentimes, Diane's calling on us, and we can't even answer her yet because we're still waiting to be unmuted. And I'm sure you don't realize this, but many of us spend hours preparing what we would like to say. We have to narrow it down, make sure we get our points across, and keep it within the three-minute timeframe. So when we finally get our turn and get told that you can't hear us, it's pretty darn frustrating. And then, on top of it, have you noticed every week that the sound continues to be a major issue with the public comment section? I'm certainly not making accusations, but I'm pointing out that this forum is not working the way that it's set up. And now we're going to add an additional step. We're going to have to bring up the agenda on our own computer to watch our three minutes as we're speaking. And I know it wasn't great for Diane to have to hold up her phone, but it was helpful because we were able to see if we had to wrap up our comments within the last few seconds. So basically, we've all adjusted because of our current environment. We've been asked to be flexible, patient. We've gone from emails to, you know, calling in. We've heard that the public forum is a very important part of this meeting. So please show us how important our comments actually are to you. It doesn't appear that in-person meetings are going to happen anytime soon. So perhaps we can add an additional time to get registered, even it's, even if it's one hour total. Maybe we can add some emails back to the public comment section. I don't want to go back to weeks and hours of comments.
Madam Chair, that's three minutes. Our next speaker is Josh Schur, followed by Shannon Robinson.
Thank you. Josh Schur, 63011. And first, I would like to agree with Suzanne, who, her point of extending the registration time is just plain common sense, apparently something that's been lacking out of the, the county council and our executive for, for several months now. So that's, that's definitely not surprising. For months, many of us have called into this meeting every week, and hundreds of us have signed petitions, called upon our leaders for help. Thousands of us feel like our voices are not being heard. I decided I was actually going to take a break and not calling in this evening until I read an article from Mandy Murphy at Fox 2. If you haven't read it, I suggest you do it as soon as possible. The article is about the alarming amount of teen suicides and attempted suicides at Marquette and Lafayette High School, which happens to be my alma mater. I was so infuriated after reading this article that I had to call in. Since the so-called pandemic, 160 students out of 667 surveyed said yes to have attempted in taking their own life. For Sam Page, that's 24%. St. Louis County has a population of 979,500 people, and there have been 1,852 total COVID deaths. For Sam Page, that's 0.19% death rate. Schools, sports, and businesses need to be open now. No masks, no social distancing guidelines. And for the people who have bought into the left-wing propaganda and are scared, they can stay home. They can virtually learn. They can have groceries delivered to their house for the rest of their lives. Why does my family and thousands of others have to suffer, especially our kids? If you don't redact these restraints, we, the people, will find a way. We will find a way to make public schools obsolete. We will organize our own athletic organizations. We will find a way to do business without your permission. And when we do, we will find a way to keep our money as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Shannon Robinson, followed by Johanna Bodine.
My name is Shannon Robinson, 63025. I first want to second everything that Josh just said. I hear you, and I feel the exact same way. Thank you for your comment. I'd like to comment on what I observed today during your 11 o'clock meeting. Mr. Tracus, you seem to be concerned with depleting the hotel revenues, but do you suggest putting, what do you suggest to put in, in place that will save our county hotels? Do you have a business model that can bring 200,000 hotel room nights to the area? And unless you have a better plan for using the restricted funds that the council already promised to stimulate the economy, return of hotels, restaurants, and sports retail to our county, then you need a supportive plan that does bring a thriving tourism industry to our region. Do you not want to see a dying mall in North County repurposed and create nearly 600 new jobs for our county? We have an opportunity to bring revenue to a county that, quite frankly, its own county leaders have helped destroy. Our county needs this. Or we can keep pushing all the businesses to St. Charles County, to Affalen, Illinois, Cape Girardeau, and Kansas City. If you haven't been involved in youth competitive sports arena, you couldn't simply understand how beneficial a complex like the Sports Plex would be. Just today, I saw a Chicago study estimated that for every $1 spent at a local venue, it generated $12 of small business economic activity. Why would you turn this future revenue away? What other ideas do you have to bring that kind of revenue? This isn't about what is smart and right for a county. This is about your personal feelings, not your professional opinion. It seemed from the meeting today that both Mr. Tracus and Ms. Clancy asked questions not to honestly listen, but to push their own agenda as usual. Quite frankly, I'm getting annoyed with the way the county is choosing to punish businesses. I'm frustrated with zero accountability for crushing our small businesses and development projects like this with our own arbitrary shutdowns. You are literally picking and choosing who succeeds and who fails. Investors have got to be thinking, why in the world would I do business in St. Louis County? Go to St. Charles County, and we'll fund you. If you want to stop hearing from us, then start making the right decisions for our businesses and especially our children. I want to tell you what I did today. Just today, I had to book two out-of-town hotel rooms for baseball tournaments, which equaled $937, and that is strictly lodging for just me and my son. In just three years, we have been to 15 out-of-town baseball tournaments totaling a minimum of $8,000 for lodging. One of our tournaments was in Colorado, so we extended our stay to make our family vacation. That is what we do now. We use travel tournaments as our family vacations. I asked this council, do you want to see this revenue pushed to other areas, or would you like to benefit from it? Parents are going to put their kids in these sports. Parents are paying for travel sports, whether you agree with the idea or not. Our town is a proud sports town, and let's support, let's show our support to not just our major league teams, but to our future generation. Please consider supporting the Powerplex venture. It's so much more than just sports. It's about revenue to an already broken economy system thanks to Mr. Page, Ms. Schmidt, and Douchette. It's about teaching the value of working.
Madam Chair, that's three minutes. Our next speaker is Johanna Bodine, followed by Arnie Dingoff.
Hi, this is Johanna Bodine. My zip code is 63005. Thank you, Ms. Robinson, for everything you just said. I, I cannot even imagine why the county executive and some of our county council members are so focused on stopping business in their county. I have three basic questions for the group tonight, and I feel like the citizens of St. Louis County need to hear direct answers from you. Why does the county continue to focus on the lockdowns and stopping things like the Sports Plex? Stopping. Sportsplex, stopping income from coming into our county, stopping people in this county from having the ability to earn a living? It's ludicrous. Secondly, when will taxpayer-funded lobbying by Sam Page be investigated? We deserve a refund. I commend the council members who are standing up and trying to shine a light on the incredible corruption that is happening in our county at this time. Please, continue it. We need that support. We are behind you, supporting you. And lastly, I also, like Mr. Scher, didn't intend to call into the county council meeting tonight. It was a last-minute decision, 6:10 this evening. I had a few minutes, and I registered. And I want to know when the county council will request the Health Department to come forward and eliminate these restrictive health edicts. Like Mr. Scher said, the impact on our youth is unbelievable. I was at the Rockwood School Board meeting, speaking just before the student group came in to speak. And I was there to speak because my son's girlfriend had just attempted suicide the day before. This is impacting our youth. You need to act, and act swiftly. Missouri has the second, as the second-leading cause of death for age 10 to 34 is suicide. It is not COVID. Our young people are not dying of COVID. This ridiculousness needs to end, and it needs to end now. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Arnie Deenoff, followed by Jason Moore.
My name is Arnie C. A.C. Deenoff, state and county public advocate. And the first thing that I'd like to address is, I cannot see the time clock in the screen. The last couple of meetings, I think that the county clerk, Valente, had said that there was a time clock. I don't see it, and I had written an email to the county clerk and also Mr. Howard. Never got a reply back, so I just am bringing it to your attention. And on the WebEx, I was wondering, can a citizen also testify via telephone instead of using WebEx? I don't know if that's available or not. If somebody could answer that at a later time via email, I would appreciate it. Tonight, I'd like to address that we owe a great gratitude and appreciation to our snow fighters. They've been out fighting now three, four storms in the past three weeks. They're risking their safety to clear our roads and make our roadways safe for us to get out in a safe-driving method. They're doing a great job. They're exhausted. They'll be out there all night tonight and all night tomorrow night, all day. And we need to thank them in these cold, harsh, difficult weather and temperatures. I think that we need to make sure that they're valued and that we appreciate their hard firefighting efforts. I'm sorry, not firefighting efforts, snowfighting efforts. I've asked in past county council meetings for an ethics investigation into the chief of police and her brother-in-law, former dispatcher Mark Pillier. This behavior is despicable and unconscionable in using the N-word and the F-word over a public radio way owned by the county and governed by the Federal Communications Commission. I read an article in the paper. I guess you're holding off on that committee hearing to address these issues. But they are systemic, and they need to be addressed ASAP and not left to another tomorrow to where somebody else is discriminated or somebody else is hurt in the employment or is a resident of the region. The county political patronage positions just continue and continue every meeting. This week, it's a prevailing wage coordinator. Who received this appointment? What political patronage position was this given to in terms of person? What is this person's public salary and public benefits? It keeps happening, and if you remember, the county is depleting its fiscal budget. Do you remember the public hearings back in November and December from all the budget officials of the county? The county is going to go broke in a few years if you don't curb your expenses. But yet, Sam Page keeps creating political patronage position after political patronage position. I'd also highly encourage the county council to place on the next available ballot for a county charter amendment to prohibit any elected official who is currently in office from being hired.
Madam Chair, that is three minutes. And our last speaker this evening is Jason Moore.
Jason Moore, 63021. I just wanted to start off with saying to Mr. Trakus and Ms. Clancy, why the sudden interest in fiscal responsibility when you started a lawsuit against half of, the other half of the county council? And in turn, they had to sue you back, or to defend themselves, I should say. So why, why the sudden interest in looking after our tax dollars? Makes no sense to me. You need to vote yes to fund the sports complex because it is desperately needed in the, in the county to, to properly compete against our neighboring cities. My only other comment in relation to Josh Scher and Johanna Bodine and, and others in regards to the suicide rate and that Fox Two News report. Mr. Page, Dr. Garza, Ms. Schmidt, Dr. Doucet, you guys have blood on your hands of our kids. I cannot tell you how awful these kids have it right now. And that's not just in Rockwood, in Marquette and Lafayette, where my daughter goes to school. But I don't know where all these other kids in all these other districts are at right now, because some of those kids are 100% at home, which is unacceptable, and those parents should be up in, in an uproar. What you have done, not only to our businesses and our economy, and the people that, that maintain these jobs and these restaurants and all these other businesses, but you are selectively destroying our kids' lives for no good reason. I mean, it, it seems almost as if it's, it's just petty politics to you. If I under, if I saw the data right, that St. Louis County trails behind our neighboring counties in relation to how many deaths that have occurred based on 100,000, based on 100,000 population, why is that? It was totally unnecessary. The 15-day window last March came and went, and now we're into February. When does it end? Before I say something inappropriate, I will say goodnight, but I wish and the rest of the council to pressure Page to haul off, to pull off the dogs. It is time to open things up 100%. 50% doesn't do it anymore. It's time to open it up. Enough is enough. And I do intend to light up the Rockwood School District Board of Education on Thursday night with this exact same message. We're not taking this anymore. Thank you, goodnight, God bless.
Thank you. Madam Chair, that is all the public speakers this evening.
Thank you very much for all those who have come forward and given us your perspective this evening. I also want to add that Suzanne, you are correct, and we are looking at changing some of the rules so that we can make the public forum a little more accessible to more people. So we do appreciate that, that perspective. Moving on to introduction of bills.
Proceeding with introduction. Bill number 53, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with T-Mobile Central LLC for lease of antenna space on the telecommunications tower located in Creve Court Park. Bill number 54, introduced by Councilmember Fitch, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an amendment to a contract with Lewis G. Ciudini Incorporated, DBA Ciudini Architects, for professional engineering services related to renovation of the Queenie Park Greensfelder Recreation Complex. Bill number 55, introduced by Councilmember Fitch, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to grant a permanent reservation in Queenie Park to the Metropolitan St. Louis Super District, and authorizing the county executive and director of Parks and Recreation to execute necessary documents. Bill number 56, introduced by Councilmember Trakus, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an agreement with Metropolitan Park and Recreation District pertaining to repair and replacement of two pedestrian bridges on Grants Trail. Bill number 57, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, an emergency ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant in an amount of up to $128,480 from the Missouri Department of Health and Human Services, appropriating said grant funds for support of the Department of Public Health's participation in the Regional COVID-19 Vaccine Efforts Program, authorizing the county executive and the director of the Department of Public Health to execute necessary documents, and declaring an emergency. Bill number 58, introduced by Councilmembers Dunaway, Webb, Clancy, Trakus, and Harder, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Michael K. Swim, Consulting Engineer Incorporated, DBA SSC Engineering Incorporated, for consulting engineering services in connection with three county projects, and authorizing the director of the Department of Transportation and Public Works to execute additional necessary documents to effectuate the contract and to execute necessary documents to revise the schedule of work activities. SLCPW number 20-34-OC, SLCPW number 20-35-OC, SLCPW number 19-15-OC. Bill number 59, introduced by Councilmember Days, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of special obligation notes, taxi anticipation, Series 2021 of St. Louis County, Missouri, for the purpose of providing funds to pay and discharge the expenses and obligations properly payable from the general funds of the county in the county's fiscal year ending December 31, 2021, and special obligation notes, taxi anticipation, Series 2022 of St. Louis County, Missouri, for the purpose of providing funds to pay and discharge the expenses and obligations properly payable from the general funds of the county in the county's fiscal year ending December 31, 2022, prescribing the form and details of the notes in the covenants and agreements to provide for the payment and security thereof, and authorizing certain actions and documents, and prescribing other matters relating thereto. Bill number 60, introduced by Councilmembers Webb, Days, and Fitch, an ordinance amending Chapter 201, Title II, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances 1974 as amended, personnel general by repealing and reenacting Sections 201.070 and 201.090 pertaining to certain appointments outside the classified service, and amending Chapter 202, Title II, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances 1974 as amended, personnel classified service by repealing and reenacting Section 202.170 pertaining to rules for the merit system. Bill number 61, introduced by Councilmember Trakus, an ordinance amending Chapter 201, Title II, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances 1974 as amended, personnel general by repealing and reenacting Sections 201.070 and 201.090 pertaining to certain appointments outside the classified service, and amending Chapter 202, Title II, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances 1974 as amended, personnel classified service by repealing and reenacting Section 202.170 pertaining to rules for the merit system. Madam Chair, that is all the bills.
Thank you very much, Kevin.
Councilwoman Days.
One second. Councilwoman Clancy?
Yes, I would like the record to reflect, and, and for everyone to take note, I would like to co-sponsor Bill 61.
So noted. Madam Clerk, did you get that?
Yes, ma'am, I did. Thank you.
Councilwoman Days?
Yes. Councilwoman Dunaway?
I too would like to be a co-sponsor on Bill number 61.
Madam Clerk, please make that notation.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Anyone else? Moving on to perfection.
Bill number 20, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Please hold Bill number 20.
Bill number 20 will be held.
Bill number 32, introduced by Councilman, Councilmember Trakus.
Thank you. Move to hold Bill number 32.
Bill number 32 is held.
Yes, ma'am.
266, Madam Clerk?
Yes. Bill number 266, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch and Harder.
I move to hold Bill 266.
Bill number 266 is held.
Bill number 267, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch and Harder.
I move to hold Bill 267.
Bill number 267 is held.
Bill number 302, introduced by Councilmembers Dunaway and Walton Gray. Madam Chair, we have a substitute bill. Substitute Bill number one for Bill number 302, introduced by Councilmembers Dunaway and Webb. An ordinance amending Title 12, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances 1974 as amended, traffic code, by deleting four provisions from Schedule III, and by enacting and adding two provisions to Schedule III.
Councilwoman Clancy, I'm sorry, Dunaway?
I move for the adoption of substitute Bill number one for Bill number 302.
Is there a second?
Second, Trakus.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Substitute has been adopted. Councilwoman Dunaway?
I move to perfect substitute Bill number one for Bill number 302.
Is there a second?
Second, Webb.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Substitute Bill number one for Bill number 302 is perfected.
Moving on to substitute Bill number one for Bill number three, I'm sorry.
I think we just did that one.
We did just do that. Bill number 41, introduced by Councilmembers Trakus, Dunaway, and Clancy.
Move to drop Bill number 41.
Bill number 41 is dropped.
Bill number 42, introduced by Councilmember Trakus.
Move to perfect Bill number 42.
Is there a second?
Second, Fitch.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill number 42 is perfected.
Bill number 43, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number 43.
Is there a second?
Second, Dunaway.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill number 43 is perfected.
Bill number 44, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
I move to perfect Bill number 44.
Is there a second?
Second, Harder.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Bill number 44 is perfected and will be, there has been a request for a committee of the whole on Bill number 44.
So you are asking for Bill number 44 to be held on the order of business and referred to the committee of the whole. Is that correct?
Can it be perfected and then have a committee of the whole?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. So it's been perfected.
Referring this to the committee of the whole. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Okay.
Got it. Bill number 45, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move to perfect Bill number 45.
Is there a second?
Second, Fitch.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill number 45 is perfected.
Bill number 46, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number 46.
Is there a second?
Second, Harder.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill number 46 is perfected.
Bill number 47, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number 47.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second, Webb.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries, Bill number forty-seven is perfected.
Bill number forty-eight, introduced by Councilmembers Days and Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number forty-eight, is there a second?
Second, Fitch.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, no. Motion carries, Bill number forty-eight is perfected.
Bill number forty-nine, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number forty-nine.
Is there a second?
Second, Dunaway.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries, Bill number forty-nine is perfected.
Madam Chair? Madam Chair?
Councilman Harder?
Yes, just a short discussion on that one, I see the full bill there, are we going to divide that bill among the partnership, because most of that audit was done for the partnership, it shouldn't be picked up by the full county.
Councilman Harder, thank you for noting that, because there was a request for that to go before a committee of the whole as well, and so I am referring that to that, and we can have that discussion at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Bill number fifty, introduced by Councilmember Fitch.
I move to perfect Bill number fifty.
Is there a second?
Second, Harder.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
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 I only heard two noes.
Roll call.
Motion carries.
Roll call.
Bill number fifty is perfected.
One moment.
For the record to reflect, I requested a roll call, please.
I think you were a little late, Councilwoman Trachis, but thank you anyway.
I don't think I was, but that's fine.
Moving on to Bill number fifty-one, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number fifty-one.
Is there a second?
Second, Dunaway.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries, Bill number fifty-one is perfected, and that too, a committee of the whole has been requested on that one, and we will be preparing that, thank you. Moving on to final passage.
Yes ma'am, Bill number three twenty, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I need to hold Bill number three twenty, as I move to hold.
Bill number three twenty is held.
Bill number fourteen, introduced by Councilmembers Trachis, Days, Dunaway, Fitch, Walton Gray, Clancy, and Harder.
Move to hold Bill number fourteen.
Bill number fourteen is held.
Substitute Bill number one for Bill number seventy-six, introduced by Councilmembers Dunaway and Harder.
I move to hold substitute Bill number one for Bill number seventy-six.
Substitute Bill number one for Bill number seventy-six is held.
Bill number two oh two, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, Madam Chair, we have a substitute bill.
Please read the substitute.
Substitute Bill number one for Bill number two oh two, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, an ordinance amending Chapter eleven oh five, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances nineteen seventy-four as amended, Department of Transportation, by repealing and reenacting Section eleven oh five point oh six oh pertaining to special use speeds.
Yes, I would, I will be moving to adopt substitute Bill number one for Bill number two oh two, but I did want to share with the council, I know my assistant wrote to each of you today to let you know of my intentions tonight to adopt this substitute bill, I will be having a hearing about this sometime within the next few weeks, and we will not move forward on perfecting the substitute bill until we have a hearing, but I would like to adopt the substitute bill so we can discuss it at the hearing. So with that, I move for adoption of substitute Bill number one for Bill number two oh two.
Is there a second?
Second, Dunaway.
Thank you, all in favor of adoption of the substitute for Bill number two oh two, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, no. Motion carries, and we will be scheduling a hearing for two oh two, thank you.
Yes, and please hold substitute Bill number one for Bill number two oh two on the order of business.
Thank you very much, that bill will be held.
Yes ma'am, sorry. Moving on to Bill number two twenty, introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
Move to hold Bill number two twenty.
Bill number two twenty is held.
Bill number thirty-three, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move for final passage of Bill number thirty-three, is there a second?
Second, Harder.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Webb?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number thirty-three, there are seven ayes.
Bill number thirty-three is finally passed.
Bill number thirty-four, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move for final passage of Bill number thirty-four, is there a second?
Second, Harder.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Webb?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Did I say Councilmember Trachis?
No, you didn't, but I'm an aye.
I'm sorry, thank you. Councilmember Harder is an aye, I apologize. Madam Chair, on Bill number thirty-four, there are seven ayes.
Bill number thirty-four is finally passed.
Bill number thirty-five, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move for final passage of Bill number thirty-five, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Webb?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number thirty-five, there are seven ayes.
Bill number thirty-five is finally passed.
Bill number thirty-six, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move for final passage of Bill number thirty-six, is there a second?
Second, Harder.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Webb?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number thirty-six, there are seven ayes.
Very well, Bill number thirty-six is finally passed.
Bill number thirty-seven, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill number thirty-seven.
Is there a second?
Second, wait.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Webb?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number thirty-seven, there are seven ayes.
Bill number thirty-seven is finally passed.
Bill number thirty-eight, introduced by Councilmembers Harder and Dunaway.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Harder?
Madam Chair, I move to hold Bill number thirty-eight, there was, we had a committee of the whole today, had a lot of good questions, and those questions are being responded to as we speak, and I would like to hold this till at least next week, thank you.
Thank you, Bill number thirty-eight is held.
Councilwoman Days?
Councilwoman Dunaway?
May I, may I say something about this, Bill number thirty-eight, please?
Absolutely, please proceed.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that, so as Councilman Harder already said, there, this council held a hearing about a project in my district earlier today without me. Before confirming the date and time of the committee of the whole on this bill, Councilwoman Days was made aware that I was unavailable and chose to move forward anyway. I would like to ask Councilwoman Days and all other members of this council how much they would appreciate the kind of leadership that doesn't include them in hearings about projects in their districts. With respect to the project at hand, I love so many things about this project, it's a brilliant idea to reuse a space whose original purpose no longer appeals to shoppers that once flocked in droves to suburban malls. It delights me to no end that Dan Buck has dedicated so much of the design of the space to host women's youth sports tournaments, something few others in the sports industry cater to, and can make our region a draw for not only youth sports, but women in sports. The economic possibilities this project brings to Hazelwood, and the visitors, revenue, and businesses this kind of project could bring to North County is a beacon for what could be in a part of our county desperate for more investment. More than anything else on my plate right now, I want this project to go forward. And because I wasn't there today, I need time to review the transcript of the meeting, I need time to talk to our budget director about the ramifications of St. Louis County's general fund being on the hook for six million dollars to build ball fields if the CVC fund dries up before meeting the commitment. And I need time to ensure that tying up this six million dollars for a project that may not have the rest of its funding in ducks in a row doesn't get in the way of other possible projects in North St. Louis County. I thank Councilman Harder for his hard work on seeing this project through even after it didn't happen in his own district. I thank him for his willingness to hold this bill until the above questions can be answered, and I thank him for understanding my frustrations and being excluded from a meeting about a project in my district, thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Dunaway, and we appreciate your sponsorship of, just a second, and we do appreciate your sponsorship of this legislation as well, Councilwoman Trachis.
Thank you, I just want the record to reflect my support and agreement with Councilwoman Dunaway's frustration and disappointment in her exclusion from today's hearing when her inability to attend was known in advance, it was just representative of poor planning and disregard for her, so I expected Mr. Harder to listen tonight so Councilwoman Dunaway can have a chance to be heard, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, and Councilman Harder, Bill number thirty-eight will be held.
Bill number thirty-nine, introduced by Councilmember Fitch.
I move for final passage of Bill thirty-nine.
Is there a second?
Second, Harder.
Roll call, please.
Discussion, please.
Discussion.
Yes, I will be voting no on this bill tonight, I understand that Councilmember Fitch does not like what this money is being spent on, however, I think it is completely unconscionable to cut the budget of the Public Health Department in the middle of a global pandemic, I want the record to reflect that, thank you.
Thank you, anyone else for further discussion?
Yes, Councilwoman.
Thank you, I just want to concur and agree with Councilwoman Clancy's objection, and agree wholeheartedly that taking money away from the Health Department at this time is not just disappointing, it's reckless, thank you.
Thank you, any further discussion?
Madam Chair?
Councilwoman Fitch?
Just so the public knows, this is the funds to pay for former Councilwoman Rochelle Walton Gray's salary and benefits, that's what this is for. If the County Executive decides he wants to cut something else other than her pay and her benefits, that's on him to make that decision, this isn't taking money away from the Health Department, this is to express this council's dissatisfaction with the political move that he made, obviously, clearly, for reasons I think we all know, that's what this is about, thank you, Madam Chair.
Further discussion? Saying that, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
No.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Webb?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
No.
Councilmember Trachis?
No.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number thirty-nine, there are four ayes and three noes.
Bill number thirty-nine is finally passed.
Bill number fifty-two, introduced by Councilmember Webb?
Madam Chair, I move to hold Bill fifty-two.
Bill number fifty-two is held. Moving on to resolutions?
Madam Chair, we have one resolution this evening, Resolution number one, introduced, sorry.
Go ahead.
Sorry, did I hear someone? Kevin, I believe you have the floor.
Resolution number one, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
Please read the first four paragraphs of the resolution, Kevin, followed by the two sections under therefore.
Yes ma'am. Resolution, whereas throughout the COVID-19 pandemic, Missouri teachers and childcare providers have demonstrated their flexibility, courage, and dedication by not only caring for and educating students, but by providing consistency and support to children and families during this historically difficult time, even when doing so puts them at greater personal risk. And whereas, after considering evidence related to epidemiology, vaccination program implementation, and ethical principles, the Center for Disease Control and Prevention's Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices COVID-19 Vaccines Work Group officially recommended that teachers and childcare workers be vaccinated in the same priority cohort as other, quote, frontline essential workers, unquote, such as police officers and firefighters. And whereas, the CDC's most recent recommendations recognize that because teachers hold jobs, quote, critical to the continued functioning of society, end quote, and are at risk of COVID-19 exposure, state and local officials should, quote, consider giving high vax vaccine tier priority to teachers, end quote. And whereas, for the state of Missouri to follow the CDC's vaccines recommendations for teacher and childcare worker vaccine priority classifications, teachers and childcare workers would be classified as Phase One B Tier One rather than their current classification as Phase One B Tier Three. Now therefore, be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section one, the County Council requests that the Governor of the State of Missouri recognize the essential nature of Missouri's teachers and childcare workers by taking executive action to reclassify Missouri teachers, school support staff members, and childcare workers as essential workers under Phase One B Tier One. Doing so would make them eligible to receive COVID-19 vaccine immediately, would bring Missouri to compliance with the CDC working group recommendations, would make Missouri's vaccine priority classification of teachers consistent with neighboring states and a majority of states and territories, would demonstrate the value Missouri places on those individuals and occupations that care for the next generation, and enable working families to fully participate in the economy. Section two, the administrative director shall send certified copies of this resolution to the Honorable Michael L. Parsons, Governor of Missouri, and Dr. Randall Williams, Director of the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services.
Thank you, Kevin, as a mom of a young child who is in school and is a former teacher, and now is a St. Louis County Councilmember who listens to her constituents every day, I think that we owe it, this body owes it to our constituents, many of whom are educators themselves or parents, who all share the goal of getting kids back in school safely, and keeping our hardworking teachers and school staff safe as well, so we owe it to them to send a strong message to the Governor and other state leaders to prioritize the vaccination of teachers and move them higher up into the tier system. So with that, I will move for adoption of Resolution number one.
Is there a second?
Second, and may I please be a co-sponsor of this resolution?
Madam Clerk, please make. Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
Yes ma'am.
Any discussion?
Um, Madam Chair?
Councilman Harder?
Yes, um, I understand what, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Clancy is doing tonight. I guess I have to ask the question, if someone is sick, whether they're a teacher or not, do they get bumped down because someone took their place by being bumped up? That's healthy. I mean, we got a lot of people that still have not gotten, uh, their shots because of other issues. They have cancer, they have diabetes, they have other issues. So we're going to put healthy people because we're going to put a certain type of job ahead of sick people that need to get this virus, uh, and need to get it quick. So I guess I have an issue with that when you start picking and choosing winners and losers by job title when it comes to this. I think our priority should be sick people ahead of healthy people. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Any further discussion? On Thursday, we will be hearing from a Dr. Williams about the vaccines and about the distribution and we can certainly request information about the teachers and where they are on the spectrum, uh, in, in line for receiving the vaccine. Uh, while we request others to act, I think it incumbent upon us to make sure that we have done all that is possible to care for our own, which of course includes our teachers. Teachers should have been a priority in testing and in receiving PPE, particularly our public school teachers. And perhaps our public school, our children, uh, would have been able to, uh, or public schools will have been remained, uh, would have been able to be remain open, as did the private schools. So those children who could least afford, uh, to miss in-school learning were denied. And in many instances, that opportunity and many daycare centers as well did not receive the sufficient resources to address their needs. So as we ask others and we require others to act, let us make sure that we have our house in order first. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Webb? Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
I will vote aye for this, but for some of the reasons I said before, we hate, need to focus on sick people in total, in any job, but I will vote for this in this case. Aye.
Madam Chair, on resolution number one, there are seven ayes.
Resolution number one is adopted.
Moving on to unfinished business. Item number one.
We will continue to hold this on the order of business. And that is, that will be the order.
Thank you. Item number two.
Hold on the order of business and that will be the order.
Under new business this evening, we have four prepared orders. Order number one in the matter of the direct, in the matter of the Director of Revenue's request to transfer all interest in certain real estate bought by him as trustee at the Collector's 2017 tax sale.
I move for adoption of order number one.
Is there a second?
Second, Fitch.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Order number one is adopted.
Order number two, in the matter of authorization for an archery hunt in Crete Court Park during 2021.
I move for adoption of order number two.
Second, Fitch.
Is there a second?
Second.
Did I hear a second? I'm sorry.
Yes ma'am. Council, Councilman Fitch?
Um, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no? No. Motion carries.
Madam Chair, did I hear you say no?
Yes, you did.
And you would like the record to reflect that?
Correct.
Thank you. Moving on to prepared order number three, in the matter of authorization for an archery hunt in Jefferson Barracks Park during 2021.
Move for adoption of order number three, please.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, no? No.
Madam Chair, the record will reflect your vote.
Thank you.
So, uh, prepared order number three, you have six ayes and one no.
Motion carries.
Moving on to prepared order number four, in the matter of authorization for an archery hunt in Greensfeller Park during 2021.
I'm, I move for adoption of order number four.
Is there a second?
Second, Fitch.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, no? No. Motion carries. Order number four is adopted.
And Madam Chair, your vote, your no vote will be recorded.
Thank you.
We're on adjournment.
Are there other orders?
Yes ma'am.
All right. Any other matters to come before the, uh, body at this particular time?
Madam Chair?
Um, Councilwoman Clancy?
Yes, um, Councilwoman Daze, you mentioned the hearing with Dr. Williams on Thursday. As you know, um, Councilmembers Webb, Dunaway, Tracus and I made that request. Um, my office has not heard of a time yet. That will need to be noticed within 24 hours of the hearing. Tomorrow is Wednesday. Um, I would like to have a time in mind, um, so that we can get this scheduled.
My office will get that, get that to you, uh, tomorrow.
Okay. Well, um, please request that your office ensures that my office and the, the other three council members that requested this hearing are available.
I will do that. Thank you so very kindly.
And I can tell you right now, I'm not available on Thursday and I would really like to be able to attend this hearing. So please, please work with my office to find a time that works for us.
We were looking at Dr. Williams' schedule. This is what his schedule allowed for us to do. And we can do this two ways. We can have it with the majority of the members, uh, or we cannot have Dr. Williams, but this is the day that he gave us. We initially started, as Councilwoman Clancy knows that, we started off with trying to get him on Tuesday. He was not available on Tuesday. He told us that Thursday would be the only day that he would be available.
Yes. And, and Councilwoman Daze, as you will recall, he was actually available a week ago tonight, um, at your request. Even though I was able to secure a quorum at that time, um, I decided as a courtesy to you and to your request to, to work with you and your schedule. So I asked, asked that you do the same of all of us. When, um, his, when his scheduler reached out to me last week, um, he had quite a bit of times available this week, but, um, per your request, I deferred to you to schedule it. So I expect that you will get that done and that you will work with the council to make sure that we are all available. Thank you.
And we will do that. Our, uh, information from Dr. Williams was that he was not available at the time that you had suggested. So we will work very hard to make sure that as many as possible, uh, can do that in light of Dr. Williams and what his schedule is. So I do appreciate that. Thank you. And thank you, uh, if there were any other miscommunications about that, we have tried very, very hard to make sure that as many as possible could attend to these, uh, these hearings. And so, but we do appreciate that. And if at any point that there is a preferable time that you can make that, I believe we had this, uh, scheduled, the previous one scheduled at least five days before. If there is a preferable time that you can make that, please, please let my office, uh, uh, make them aware of that. So thank you. Anyone else, anyone else? Thank you. Councilman Hard, uh, Fitch?
Yes ma'am, thank you. I just wanted to compliment, um, the Department of Transportation on the snow removal efforts. I think this was a very tough, uh, snow battle this time because of the low temperatures. And I was out last night and again early this morning. And I'll have to tell you, the county arterial roads were in much better shape than the state maintained roads. So I just wanted to thank, um, the Acting Director of Transportation and Public Works. And I did have a conversation with her this morning. And one of the other things that we talked about that was surprising to me is that we actually had snow, we had trucks parked that we didn't have enough drivers for because of the shortage of personnel and how hard it is to keep personnel in the Department of Transportation and Public Works. So that's something we absolutely need to address as we start having conversations about employee compensation. So I just wanted to bring that out and thank them and say that we recognize that there is a staffing, a manpower, uh, shortage in that department. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. I want to, at this time, uh, to congratulate one of our own, uh, Councilwoman Shalonda Webb has been, uh, awarded the 2021 Black Engineer of the Year Award. And so I just wanted to make sure that the council is aware of that accolade that she has received. Without any further ado, a motion to adjourn, please. Thank you.
Thank you everyone for those congratulatory remarks. I do want to make note that, uh, District 4 legislative assistant, Shantae Harmon Young, was rushed to the hospitals today for an emerg, and had to have emergency surgery. I just want to thank everybody who reached out to our office in, in concern for her and asked that you keep her your positive prayers and prayers for some. And, uh, I thank you all for all the support because she is a very much appreciated in District 4's office. So thank you all again.
Thank you so much and give her our best and, just a minute, Councilwoman Clancy, thank you so much and give her our best and, uh, our prayers are with her. Thank you. Councilwoman Clancy?
Yes, I was, I, I had mentioned earlier, I had one more comment and you went straight to Councilmember Fitch. Um, I would, I would like to request, I, there were quite a few, um, points tonight where you said that there was, um, interest in a hearing and it would be helpful for me, um, to know who, which council members have interests in what bills, um, for the purposes of my office being able to reach out to council members directly to prepare for the hearing and make sure that we're, um, answering their questions in whatever hearing, um, the matter might be about. So, uh, moving forward, I would, I would like for you to say more about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second?
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all. Stay warm, stay safe. See you next time. Thank you.